Good evening, welcome to the June 29th Planning and Zoning Commission Work Session. It's about 6:02. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask Laura if you can help us establish a call.
Hello, Mr. Wathers?
I'm here.
Ms. Kipner? Mr. Lester?
Here.
Mr. Hoff?
Here.
Mr. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith?
Here. Mr. Kipner? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we heard you.
Okay.
Commissioner Wamp?
Here.
Secretary Eisenberg?
Here.
Mr. Chair, please put the record to plac that six members are present and we do have a call.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving on to item four of our agenda, review and approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda that was sent around to us previously?
No, there were no changes to this evening's agenda.
I'd be happy to entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as presented to us then.
A move we approve.
All right, I'm hearing two motions. I'll take one as a motion and one as a second. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay. The agenda will stand approved. Move on to item five, the administrative report. Madam Secretary.
I have nothing to report this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Item six, the annual report. We have a discussion and I think, at least on the agenda, it's listed as Tiffany Fawcett. So I'll turn the floor over to Ms. Fawcett and anyone else that wants to lead us through this discussion.
Yes, so again Tiffany is here to just get your consensus on the annual report that was sent to you and reported on at the last Planning Commission meeting. She gave a very thorough presentation and then distributed the annual report. So hopefully you've had an opportunity to look over those documents. And Tiffany is here to answer any questions that you may have with regard to the annual report itself. So Tiffany, I don't know if you want to pull up the report and any other information. And I can, if I can ask if you're not speaking, if you could please be muted because we get a lot of feedback. So I believe we have a member, Mr. Thank you, appreciate it.
And are you currently seeing the presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
We can see your screen of the presentation, not the report itself.
Oh, did we want the report right now?
Unless you're, there's additional information you want to pull up from the annual report. If you want to go over anything briefly, that's fine too.
Just wondering if anybody had any questions about the presentation from last year, about last week, the introduction at all? There were no questions about that. I can, again, my first time using this platform for sharing my screen and now getting out of sharing my screen is going to be complicated for me.
You can just leave it.
Yeah, that's fine. It's always a little nerve wracking. I thought your introduction last time was, was very thorough, particularly for an introduction. And then, of course, we've had the report. So we could go through it. Do any members of the commission have any questions? As a result of having the opportunity to review the report or in light of anything Ms. Fawcett had presented to us previously? I think it's fascinating. Honestly, that's what we said before. When you take a look back at where we've been and what we've done, it's really, really helpful. If there are no questions, I think, Madam Secretary, do we need to take action or get approval for me to execute the letter that was circulated?
So yes, you have to, yes, exactly. That's exactly what we need, a motion to approve the letter of consistency with the 2021 annual planning report and submittal into the Maryland Department of Planning, along with the five-year mid-cycle review, which will be included as part of the appendices of the annual report.
All right. Does anyone care to make such a motion?
I can make that motion that we approve the new signing away that we accept the five-year annual report.
And Linda, very good. And just to refine it, Linda, do you mind reading what you said before, just so we can have the, it makes it a little easier. It's a cumbersome motion, I think.
So the motion would be that you move to approve the 2021 annual, annual planning report and the five-year mid-cycle review for submittal to the Maryland Department of Planning in consistency with the master plan. Yeah.
So Matt, would you be interested in adopting what she just said?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Very good.
And I will second it.
All right, so we have the motion as stated and articulated by the secretary. Mr. Hoff has made the motion. We have a second by Mr. Lester. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Thank you. Then the, the annual report is approved, along with the five-year appendices. And Ms. Fawcett, thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to item seven of our agenda this evening, which is agricultural and, I'm sorry, strike that, agriculture and conservation zoning text discussion.
So we are going to pick up where we left off at our last meeting. We have an hour of time blocked for this, as well as an hour of time blocked off for chapter 155, which you were given information about at the last Planning Commission meeting, and that's something that Laura Metias and her team will be giving to you after we're done with this portion. And so with that, Mary, I believe, wanted to start off with the presentation that I gave to you a few weeks ago on remaining portions. Is that correct, Mary? Just to refresh that memory.
It is. Excuse me. Did you want to be the presenter on that, Linda?
Sure, I'll present this if you want me to. So, no, I got it. Control, if I can share my screen. So I'll go over this fairly quickly because you've already had this presentation before. But I think that the take-home message is, is that we really didn't find any big, big deal, so to speak, with ag remaining portions. Yes, we have them. Yes, they're, they're in the county and there's quite a few of them. But we don't see a lot of other types of uses happening on remaining portions currently. So what is a remaining portion? And this is different than an ag remaining. I don't want to get into all the nuances. But what we're really talking about is the agricultural remaining portion. And it's used to refer to the property that has been subdivided. So again, when we have ag land, you can subdivide so many parcels off depending how many acres you have. And it's a typical one unit per 20 acre equation. If you include septic tiers and that, pretty much all of our ag land is capped at seven lots, no matter, no matter what. And then, once you've utilized those lot rights, the portion that is undeveloped goes into what we call a remaining portion. Under our current code, your remaining portion, you can have a religious establishment, school, daycare, vet, contractors, equipment storage, or commercial kennel, nursing home, and other types of recreational, commercial, and institutional uses. So basically, what, what does this mean? So these are four examples of types of development that are seen on our existing ag remaining portions. So many of you might be familiar with the Golden Crest Assisted Living Facility, really beautiful facility going northbound on Maryland 97 toward Westminster. The Union Town Bible Church, Carroll Lutheran School, and then the Inspirations Memory Care are all developed on agricultural remainders. So basically, farms that had subdivided off whatever their lot rights were. And then, in addition to that, developed these more institutional types of uses on those remaining portions. So this is found in two current sections of the code, 155, which is our subdivision section, and then our actual zoning, which is our 158. So it's defined as the potential for the creation of a residential subdivision lots based on the area of the existing zoning classification of the parcel. So this is, that's, that's the definition of development, right? Subdivision is any tract of land or parcel in two or more lots or a parcel for immediate or future sale. Any division of land involving a new street or involving property identified by the county as all or a part of the planned public project should be a subdivision. So that's currently what's in our definitions. And then, the remaining portion is, in the ag district, the land remaining after residential lots have been created from a legally established parcel of land through the subdivision process. So again, just what I had just spoken about. So, you know, we've had a lot of discussion, you know, what is the order of magnitude of remaining portions? I know there has been some concern that we may have a lot of remaining portions not necessarily being used for agriculture in and of itself, but may have other types of uses and development within those remaining portions. So what we have found in our research is that basically 98% of remaining portions are in non-residential use, and most of that happens to be in agriculture. So out of the 1,000 remaining portions, the number of non-residential remaining portions are only 16. So that's 1.57% that are not in a non-residential use. I think I misspoke earlier. So really, we don't have very many. So this is a map of our remaining portions and the non-residential remaining portions. So the gray on the map, those are all the remainders that are within Carroll County. The blue dots are the ones that, through our research, we have found that are the non-agricultural types of not remainders. So we have the Bible Church, Carroll Lutheran, a golf course, preschool, assisted living, several assisted livings, several schools, a church, tend to be the predominant uses within these agricultural remaining portions. And they're pretty evenly spread in some ways throughout the county. So we have three schools and a daycare center, five religious establishments, five assisted living, two recreational uses, and those are the golf courses. And then one, not our big airport, but a small regional little air, air landing strip that are on these remainders. So the issue and why we're bringing this to your attention is that there was an assumption that the property has been built, there is an assumption that the property has been built out when one of these developments occurs. So basically, you've taken off your residential portion and then someone, or the property owner on the non, the, the remaining agricultural portion builds on that and they put, they put a school or an assisted living. There is no limit to the number of uses that can be placed on that remaining portion. So you could essentially have a church, a daycare, and an assisted living if you have the land and you can work it out to have the remaining portion developed. So it's not really agricultural remaining portion then at that point. But again, you saw, we don't have many of these throughout the county, but this is a potential that could happen. So just a few options as we move forward with our code adjustments is, we could just leave it as is. Again, as I just showed you, it really is a, a, a nothing burger, so to speak. There's only 16 of these in the county out of all of the agricultural remaining portions that we have. We haven't seen a ton of it. Doesn't mean there's not opportunity or potential for a lot more, especially as land becomes more scarce. We could recommend prohibiting further development on agricultural remaining portions. We could recommend prohibiting certain intense non-residential uses on agricultural remaining portions. I mean, we can go through that list. Or we could recommend limiting the number of uses allowed on a single remaining portion. And some examples are, we could limit by acres. So say you only have a 10-acre remaining portion, then maybe that's just one, you get one use. If you have 30, you can get three uses perhaps. Unlimit the different types of uses. So you could have one religious establishment and one school, that sort of thing. Or the number of the same uses, so no more than two or three of a similar or the same use. For instance, like Golden Crest has two assisted living facilities on their one ag remaining portion. So that was a lot, and this was a refresher too from a presentation last time, but it's been, been a month or two. Are there any questions? I'm trying to understand what we're trying to accomplish with this in particular, or any concerns? Do we even want to tackle it at all?
Just quickly, housekeeping order. I just wanted the record to reflect that Luke was able to join us. Welcome, Luke.
Thank you, yes, welcome.
So the, the options for consideration when you've identified the issues, the first two seem to be the opposite, I mean, seem to be the most extreme, either do nothing or change everything, right? And then somewhere in between. How? How big of a problem is this? I mean, is this a potential solution in search of a problem or?
That's the whole thing. I mean, so only, so out of this whole, all of the gray, and it may be hard to see, the gray on the map, those are all the remaining portions in the county. And only 16 of them have been used for something else that's not agricultural. So we have 11, I'm sorry, 1,017 remaining portions. Out of that, only 16 are being used in this way. But the flip of that, you could say is we have, you know, 1,001 properties potentially that could have these types of uses on them if people so choose to do that with their property. And then to what extent? So I guess the potential's there, but we haven't seen it utilized. So is it an issue? I, I don't think it's an issue, but others might. I know that was something that a commissioner had expressed some concern over, was the potential for this. So that's why we're bringing it to your attention, because there was that concern expressed. And again, I don't see it as an issue right now, but it does have a potential. You know, if someone chose to, to develop their properties like that, that we could have, you know, 1,001 properties now potentially with, but it already used their residential rights to now do something else on it with no limits.
And I, go ahead, Michael.
Wanted to ask, so if the property owner wanted to do something else to it, they would have to go through the formal steps and process and, you know, eventually would get back up through the, the Planning and Zoning our board to hear that potential or that proposal? Or are they exempt?
Yes, depending on what the use is, Mary. I don't know. Do we have a table to show that? Maybe you can share your screen based on the use table? I mean, some uses would be allowed, some would be conditional. Planning Commission doesn't really get to say for the most part if the use is allowed or not. That would be determined really through the zoning administrator or the Board of Zoning Appeals if it's a conditional use. If it's a use allowed by right, then you'll just see the plan and the plan would have to just be consistent with the code.
And I think one reason we wanted to talk about this before we did the use table is, as we go use by use, some of these things you might want to consider what you've just seen here. I mean, we'll go through the use table and it will show private school as being permitted. So then you'll know which ones are permitted by right and which ones are conditional uses. And that may factor into how you feel about this issue.
Do, do we have a sense of whether there are some constraints in place that have caused such a small number of these to be utilized?
No, we have no way of knowing that. That's kind of anecdotal information that we don't collect. So we don't know why they haven't been utilized for the most part. I will say, and we haven't seen it yet, but there's been a lot of discussion about the solar. So, you know, we're doing the solar pilot study. The solar pilot study can happen on ag remaining portions that are within a certain acreage limitation. And then, once the solar utilization has ended, the property goes into agricultural preservation. And I don't want to speak for development review, but I believe there is something coming forward now with the solar potential on one of these ag remaining portions. That's just one piece of why the solar property is being utilized. There's other factors involved. That solar companies seek out certain properties. So not every property would be eligible for that. But that has been one of the more recent concerns moving forward to with this. Some, some people take it as a concern, some people don't take it as a concern, because some people really like the idea of community solar. They like the idea of how our particular lawn ordinance was written with the co-location for habit, pollinators, as well as the potential for it to be an ag pres. So we, we actually, because it's a pilot, we were not really recommending any changes to the solar provision portion at this time for the ag remainders.
Well, and before I, I turn it over to anybody else who might have a question at this point, is, is the process in front of us right now that you would want to then, tonight, walk through the use table of, of what's permitted, or is that for another time?
Well, I think tonight we wanted to go through the use table. That's the next step. We're on page 26 of that draft that we left last time, which I'll be sharing the screen soon. So as we go through the uses, as you've seen the 16 that have been there, if you see a use and, and that is a concern, if, yeah, Linda, could you go back to where it lists? I think it's assisted living, religious establishment, schools, and daycare centers seem to be more the concern. The airports, I don't think that or the recreational uses are of a particular concern to most people.
Okay. Unless there's an objection, we could, maybe go ahead through the use table. Does anybody have any questions at this point before we start doing that?
I would ask just one question, Linda. So if somebody or, 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 you know, Mary, anybody. So if, if I want to build a school or a church or any of these other uses, what is the factor on a getting that approved? Is it, is it, is it perk? Is it, is it access to sewer, access to water, well water? I mean, are those the, are those the limiting factors as to what I can build and how much I can build, how many units I can put on there if I'm building a, a nursing home?
Mr. Hoff, can you unmute your microphone, please? We're getting some feedback.
So I think, I think it's a few things. I think it would really come down to the site plan approval process. And if it needs a conditional use approval, and I think that's what we're going to be talking about now, is if it needs conditional approval. For instance, I'll say, and correct me if I'm wrong, is it assisted living that we can determine how many beds along with, they have to come to planning commission prior to going to the Board of Zoning Appeals, even for the number of beds for a facility?
For everything over eight, that's correct.
Yeah, yeah. So that would be something a little bit, well, that portion would be under your purview. Then it would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the use, and then it would come back to you for the site plan approval.
Okay. Peter, that answers your question. Yeah, I guess unless any other comments right now, Mary, if you want to start walking us through the, through the table of what's permitted, what's conditional and what's prohibited and so forth, that would be enlightening, I think. Mary, you're muted.
Thank you. I'll start all over. We're starting on page twenty-six, as I said before, and that's the draft that you received last time. And before I keep going, you can see my screen, correct? Yes, okay. So this is the table of principal land uses. It's, again, it's principal uses, it's not the accessory uses that we'll be getting into later, it's not temporary uses, these are principal land uses, and that's defined in the code. These rules you see in front of you, there are twelve of them on page twenty-six. These are the rules that we established when we first began this with the commercial and industrial zones, and they've been tinkered with a little. We've gotten feedback on, you know, how things could be said more clearly for people to be able to interpret the table. A lot of these are standard in all use tables. So I won't go through them. The only thing I will point out is that number twelve this time is new, and we've also added it to the residential and the commercial use tables, which were previously adopted, because it was suggested to us that some people were interpreting additional regulations to meet all additional regulations and were surprised to find out they needed a site plan. So the additional regulations column in this use table is really informational, and it in general and maybe exclusively only includes other regulations from chapter one fifty-eight zoning. It is not intended to tell somebody throughout the code and throughout the government, everything they need to comply with. It is other zoning regulations to be used as a cross-reference for ease of understanding. And we just wanted to make that clear, that it does not include all additional regulations that apply to the use. So that's a, an addition this time around, and you'll see later in the draft, we added that to the residential use table and the commercial industrial use table as well.
Hey, Mary, one, this is Jeff, one quick question, just in the language. So do we mean in number twelve that the additional regulations listed in the table below may not include all additional regs that apply to the use, such as the requirement for a site plan? Is that, is the site plan review an example of something that may not be included below?
Yes. So would such as be better language for that? Is that what you're suggesting?
For me, it would be a little bit clearer. You know, we're saying, just that, to me, it just makes it a little clearer that that, this is an example of that, you know, such as this. I don't know how anybody else feels.
No, that's an easy change to make, and I mean, that's the purpose of, of doing this, is to make this clearer. So thank you, we will make that change. And I think that's the one that's caused some of the confusion when people go to the zoning office and, and they are surprised to find out they would also need a site plan because it's not listed. So that was the purpose of that. Before I start, just a couple things, I just wanted to let you know the process that we went through. There's, I guess, this is one of our shorter use tables, certainly the commercial industrial was much longer. But the process we went through this time was exactly what we went through last time. We took the advice of the work group when, when there was an issue. But really, our inter-agency team went through and we looked at all the existing uses, they're listed separately in the code, so we just reformatted them into this, this format. We looked at other rural jurisdictions in this case, we looked at best practices, we looked at things that had caused problems in the past that now was a good opportunity to fix. We looked at, I mean, really, it was just a back and forth with all the members of the committee, and we didn't end up making a lot of changes. There weren't a lot of changes to be made in this section. There's, we'll get later on into specific regulations where we made some changes. But as far as things being either permitted, prohibited, or conditional, we didn't make a lot of changes. So I'll go through it, and I will note where a change has been made. And I'll also note if we've made a change, we did look into if we would be creating any non-conforming uses in making that change, so I will let you know if we've done that. And then I know we've been talking about agriculture and conservation together, but as you go through this, keep in mind that they are very different districts, and that's why you'll see some significant differences in how we treat them, because the purposes of each are quite different, even though, you know, most of the county has these two zoning districts, and they are rural areas, but they have different purposes. So you'll see as we go through, there's a lot of things that aren't the same about the two districts. So if there's no questions, I'll just start with agriculture, as with all zones in Carroll County zoning districts, this is permitted by right. There's a small change to make to the additional regulations. Nurseries and greenhouses are not subject to one fifty-eight oh four oh, so I'm going to cross that out. This is really just reflecting what's in the current code. Then you'll see the next, on the top of page twenty-seven, the next group of agricultural related uses. And as you can see, all of these are either conditional or permitted in the agricultural district, but a lot of them are prohibited in conservation. Several of them are conditional. The one thing I will note is we have this new use that we talked about last time, agritourism. And this encompasses some uses that used to be considered agriculture, and we've made this, or we're recommending that this be a conditional use in the conservation zone. So I'm not sure if this will impact, if there's anybody using that, doing something under the broad definition of agriculture that now falls into agritourism, it would be a conditional use. So that is something that's possibly less restrictive and something to consider. I also want to go back to the question last time about guest farms. We've looked into taking guest farms out of the definition of agritourism, and Mr. Huff had a concern about that wouldn't allow certain things that are traditionally done on the farm, and we have been assured that that would not be included in a guest farm. In Frederick County, a guest farm is defined as basically a B and B or, or a camping area. So we are going to treat that differently. So I just wanted to point that out. We did look that up, and taking the word guest farm out of the definition will not negatively impact those. So.
Hey, Mary, I have one, one quick question, just to remind me, I should know the answer to this, but I can't remember for sure. If it's conditional, does the applicant then first have to go to the BZA?
Yes.
And, and have, make their case as to why they should be given conditional, or be given approval when it's a conditional use?
That's correct.
Okay. And then from a macro picture, conditional, I know we've talked about this in other contexts, but when it's conditional, it tends to create exceptions, I guess, or unevenness in terms of the uses of the property or properties across the county. You know, if it's permitted, we know it's, it's permitted or it's not. If it's not permitted, it's not. These conditionals are sort of in the middle, and some, sometimes they're there and sometimes they're not. I know I'm not being very clear, but I just remember in the past that conditional makes things a little bit less predictable, perhaps.
It does make them less predictable. There is a presumption that a conditional use should be permitted, and I wish Jim was here, because he could give the legal definition of it. But yes, you're right. If it says P, then everybody should know that that is something that is permitted by right in that district.
Okay, thank you.
So does anybody have any questions or comments about this section on agricultural? Again, the only real change was adding agritourism and making it conditional in the conservation district. Okay. The next category is communications, and there's no changes here. Communications tower and communications tower complex, which is just meaning more than one tower. And this is as written in the current code. And these sections that you see in that column are further regulations on them. I'm just going to move through in case, or unless somebody interrupts me. I'll just keep going. All vehicle sales and service is prohibited, and all eating and drinking establishments are prohibited. Those are not spelled out as they are in the commercial, because they are all prohibited. So that's general category, and that's why it's showing the X there. Under retail and service, butcher shop, conditional in the ag and prohibited in conservation, as is garden supply center, as is liquid or dry fertilizer sales, and all other retail and sales are, I'm sorry, retail and service are prohibited. The one thing that has been brought to our attention is for butcher shop, if the butcher shop includes meat processing and not just the sale of meat, then the comment has been made, should it be included in the distance requirements in one fifty-eight oh four oh? Because currently, there wouldn't be any distance requirements on the meat processing. So I don't know if that's something you wanted to consider to add to that section, adding a distance requirement to butcher shop if there's meat processing?
One, one thing, if I could, on that, the big concern is the difference between a slaughterhouse and a butcher shop. Those locations slaughter animals on site. So are they basically the same use, or are we really going to look at them as two uses?
What, what has been the practice? What has been the practice, Jay?
Well, generally, we've always looked at a slaughterhouse as a, a large, it doesn't have to be large, but an operation just where animals are killed and processed. Meat packing plant where you bring cows in, slaughter them right there on site, and then process them for food. A butcher shops, we look at more as something like a bull ox out on Route thirty-two. Yes, they do slaughter animals there on site, they do process the meat, and it's then retail sales on the same premise with it. The, the difference, one is for your larger, generally your larger facilities that are just slaughtering it, processing the meat and packaging it, and then selling it wholesale to other companies, whereas a butcher shop is more slaughtering, processing, and selling retail directly there on the site.
So we do have a definition for butcher shop in the code that we added, I believe, with the commercial and industrial, and it's a shop in which meat, poultry, and/or fish are processed and sold to the general public. We do not define slaughterhouse. Jay, do you think it would be helpful to add a definition for that? Because that is later in the use table, just to be clear here.
It, it might not be a bad idea. There are a lot of butcher shops and actually a lot of small ones in County. There are, you know, there could very easily be, you know, a slaughterhouse just for slaughtering and, and processing the meat, packaging it. So would it hurt? It never hurts to have a definition defining something. It makes things easier. If you don't have any large slaughterhouse in County.
The, and the question, Mary, that you had raised about was about walk requirements or setbacks and that sort of thing?
Yes, but if it's a slaughterhouse, that's on the next page, we'll go over that. A slaughterhouse does have the separation requirements. So if we define slaughterhouse so it's clear which category you fall under, we may not need them for the butcher shop. So I'm going to take that comment.
And they're necessary because generally, a slaughterhouse is a bigger operation, so you want, want setbacks, you want separation. Is that the idea behind it?
That's what's been suggested to us, yes. But a butcher shop, which is also the retail sale.
Well, one of the things, you know, with slaughterhouses, I mean, you don't want a Purdue chicken factory coming in where basically they take the chickens and they fill them in a package and then send them out to wholesalers, you then sell them to retailers. That's a fairly large operation and a lot of, for, under here in County. And like I said, the butcher shop is like bull ox, where they definitely, they do slaughter animals on the site, process them, but they've got also more or lesser there for the retail sales.
And I note that it's conditional. Is it, does the BZA have authority when they're deciding on whether to allow the conditional use to also build in setback or separation requirements as part of that?
Yes, they can, the, the BZA can set conditions, and they can increase distances, you know, hours of operations and stuff of that nature, so they do have that authority to do that.
So I guess the question really for us is, do we want to set certain minimums? Otherwise, if we don't, then we're really leaving it to the BZA to take into account the circumstances that are presented each time. And again, back to, is it better to just let them take that into account, given the circumstances? If we set some minimums, the minimums might not, might not work well with that particular set of circumstances. I don't know if, if there've been, I guess the question is, have there been problems with separations and, and situations where maybe not enough separation has occurred according to certain people?
There hasn't been any real problems that I know of. It's, it's just something that, once again, can be an issue. We've had people question, you know, the difference between a slaughterhouse and a, a butcher shop.
Matt, do you have any thoughts on any of this? This is your, this is your wheelhouse.
Um, I think as time goes on, we're going to have more butcher shops in the county as more, it's harder to get stuff done. And, you know, with our Amish community moving in, it's a possibility we may have more. So that would, that would be my thought. I would think, you know, being a conditional use kind of puts some guardrails around it a little bit, that it gets looked at farther. I don't think the setbacks are a bad idea, because if you don't like the setbacks, you can always ask for, you know, for, for variances, yeah. So I don't think setbacks are going to be a problem.
So would it make sense, I guess, Matt, to, and Jay, really, from your perspective too, if we were to set some, you proposed some minimum setbacks for a slaughterhouse?
Well, excuse me, the slaughterhouse does have an eight hundred foot setback. So the slaughterhouse is taken care of.
Okay, so it's butcher shops, it's the butcher shop.
It's the butcher shop, right?
It's the, the butcher shop that doesn't have any type of extra setback or anything.
Right, but there's still slaughtering animals there.
Right. A lot of the butcher shops we have processed have been smaller operations, on some farms, a couple of farmers also slaughtered deer and other animals for people on their farm and stuff of that nature. That's generally handled under a butcher shop because of the lower volume. So, and generally, if it's on a farm, you've already got a good separation anyway, but there's always that chance that, and like I say, the BZA can look at that and, and put conditions upon it if they feel so.
Yeah. And I'm sorry to belabor this, but this would be one of those things, we don't, if we don't set something, and then later something comes to us, and it's obvious, we really wish there was some separation, and we're going to look at the code and say, well, now we don't have any real basis to impose that separation, because the code doesn't require it. So this really is our chance to look out across the horizon and say, do we want some minimum separation when it comes to a butcher shop? Matt's point, I, I think, is that we may see, may see a trend that has more of these in our community. And if we do, would, do we want to set some minimum setback requirements? That's number one. And number two, I guess, Mary, I have a question. If there are minimum setback requirements, does the BZA have the authority to vary those, given circumstances?
Yes, they get those requests all the time, yes.
Okay.
So the standard separation requirement for a lot of uses is two hundred feet. You'll possibly remember, we went back through those last time, and then for every more intense use, there's a number of uses that are four hundred, a number that are six hundred, a number that are eight hundred, and a couple, like an airport and a rubble fill are a thousand, I believe. So two hundred would be the minimum, if you were just making it refer to. One fifty eight oh four oh, it would have a two hundred.
And that would probably be an appropriate length of a setback, keep it away from, you know. Residential houses that are nearby. A slaughterhouse, yeah, eight hundred feet. That's a, that's a large commercial operation, basically. And yeah, you want that away from the residences. But like I say, a lot of butcher, butcher shops are on farms or small businesses out there that. Aren't that large. So if anything, I would suggest maybe a two hundred foot maximum setback for that.
So it sounds like maybe the, the idea I would put forward is have a two hundred minimum setback, two hundred foot minimum setback for. A butcher shop, have a separate definition for slaughterhouse. We don't have that right now so that we don't get into a question of is it a butcher shop or a slaughterhouse? And the slaughterhouse already has its setbacks. Would, does anybody disagree with, with that?
I agree with that.
Okay, good. Again, sorry to take so much time on this particular one. But I, I think, I think we have a consensus on that, Mary and Jay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to move along to funeral. Cemeteries, crematoriums, funeral establishments. Let's see, cemeteries are conditional uses, crematorium. Prohibited and funeral establishments also prohibited. And we made no changes to funeral establishments. We did, I'm sorry, the crematorium used to be conditional in the ag. So that is the one change. We haven't identified any that have approved conditional uses in the ag district.
Um, I have one question on that. As a guy that has a cremium, crematorium for my cows. And, you know, we do have to dispose of them. And I know it's also a problem with our local butcher shops now because. Valid proteins no longer picks up a lot of. Stuff from them unless it's fat or grease. And I know, I haven't had direct talks, but I've had people talking to me about it. Uh, the possibility of putting in crematoriums for, you know, slaughter animals and stuff like that. And where does that fall? Cuz it's not really a conditional use for bag. But it could be, you know, if. You know, you wouldn't want your. Local butcher shop to have one right there at its purpose, I don't think. So it might be, I don't know where it would fall into, in there.
Yeah, the crematorium is defined as only being for deceased persons. So Jay, if somebody came to you with. That question, what would you consider them? Or deceased animals?
Jay, you're muted. And Mary, I would just interject, I would think if it's for farm purpose or an agriculture purpose, then it could be an accessory use.
That's, that's what I'm thinking. That, that's something that's incidental and secondary to the agricultural use. And there's other ways I know of dis- disposing of cattle. You can, you can bury them on a farm if I remember correctly. Decompose them that way.
As a farmer, I don't agree with that, just for the record, but anyway, you can do that, yes.
Um, so like I say, incidental and secondary to the agricultural use, that, that would be. A more appropriate thing for that in, in the ag.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking of like secondary use because you'd be bringing something in if it was coming from a slaughterhouse or something like that.
That would be an issue possibly, you know, if you're trucking in a lot of. Carcasses from other, other facilities, that, that definitely could be an issue. Uh, because then they're basically running a, a business as a crematorium and there are businesses in the county. That are crematoriums strictly for animals.
Yeah.
Industrial park. Um, so that would be, at that point, a, a business use. And, yeah, that, that would be an issue.
So how do we get some predictability around that? I mean, if farmers wanna know whether they can, if they wanna get the question answered. Under the circumstances Matt was talking about, if it's a, I don't really understand if it's an accessory use or a secondary use. How, how do they go about getting that question answered? What's, what's the process in that?
Mister Chairman, we could add a pretty specific definition of it being an accessory use. In the code, um, to provide those guardrails. It just doesn't have to be, oh, it's secondary and incidental, we can say. Crematorium in the list of enumerated accessory uses and have a more specific definition, giving that guardrails to kind of. Prevent the issue that Jay brought up or, or that Commissioner Hoff brought up of just people, you know, trucking in. Animals every day and running into that type of problem, but making it more specific to. To, to the individual property.
And if it's an accessory use and it meets the definition that we're gonna create, then, then they are entitled to, to. To utilize it in that way. They don't need special permission from us or the BZI.
There are some accessory uses that, um, require zoning administrator approval. So we could add that extra step. But normally it's an accessory uses, an accessory use and is permitted without. Zoning administrator approval or BZI approval.
Yeah, I, I was thinking definitely for like, okay, you have the butcher shop on the farm, which animals are coming to the butcher shop. Can you have a crematorium for your waste products and going out? And under what guidelines would they be?
Uh, now, I, I don't know for sure. Does, does Bullock's have a crematorium on site or do they?
No, like, like, like I said, valid proteins just in the last two months had stopped taking, I think hides. And some parts of the carcass. I don't know what parts. I haven't been in direct contact, but. I know they stopped taking them and I know. Mount Airy Wagner's is really concerned and trying to figure out how to dispose of them now. So they're talking with some commercial composting sites and stuff about taking them. So I know it's a real problem. I'm not, yeah, I, I've talked to someone who's not in Carroll County, but. In another county that's kind of working through that, seeing what's legal and can they do it?
Would it be possible from a process standpoint for this to get a little more study and then? Cause there might be some other incidental issues around these things that maybe we could, we could take a look at this, see if, if it makes sense as an incident. As an accessory use and if we can get a good definition and. Then I think, then the folks in the community are gonna have a better idea of what they can do and can't do. And how it impacts, you know, neighboring properties, if at all, you know. Would that sort of be possi-, would it be possible to have this one sort of pulled out and, and maybe a little bit more study and then have it come back to us?
Yes, we, we can do that and I, we can look at what other nearby counties might do. Yes, we can definitely do this.
Like I said, it's, it's a new problem that just happened for everyone. So I would definitely say we should probably should be talking to our. Local butchers, you know, Bullocks, Mount Airy. And, and see where they're at and what they're running into, so.
Yeah, good. All right, good. Well, that, if you, we'd appreciate then if you could pull that one out, get a little more study, talk to the folks like Matt was talking about and. Get a better sense of what's involved and how it might impact neighboring. Uh, property owners as well, and then we can bring this back to us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the next category is lodging and it's bed and breakfast with, which are currently and would remain conditional use in agricultural and conservation districts. You'll see that and we'll go over it later. They are subject to one fifty eight, one six three, which is towards the end of this legislation. And that's a number of, um, extra requirements that would be on that. Um, all other lodging would not be permitted, hotels, motels.
Mary, do we need to move down on the table that's on the screen?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. The next category is office and healthcare veterinary facilities permitted in the ag. Um, again, with some specific require, oh, some distance requirements and conditional in the conservation district. That is no change. But all other office healthcare are prohibited. Again, stop me if you have any questions. The next category is recreation and entertainment. So the first thing that comes up is commercial camping area. And this is one that we've discussed, I think briefly, when we talked about definitions. There are a number of requirements in place that we'll get to later for commercial camping areas, but this is kind of a hot topic right now. Um, how these should be allowed. And one of the problems was this was what the guest farms look like. They would be falling under and we would like these to be, remain conditional uses with a number of requirements. Whereas if they were considered part of agritourism, they would be permitted by right. There are no other real changes to this. We've consolidated categories as we did with the other. Use tables for indoor recreational facilities, which in this case are prohibited and outdoor, which are conditional. Those are both defined and they include a number of uses. Um, and there's a few things that are pulled out like the outdoor traps, skeet rifle and archery. Again, those are conditional and, um, commercial stables are permitted. No changes. No changes there. Oh, I take it back. One thing, golf course, golf course is, we're proposing it be conditional in the conservation. It is currently permitted by right and there is one in the county. That falls into that category that would become technically a non-conforming use because it wouldn't have a conditional use. Just something I wanted to bring to your attention, that, that would negatively impact one existing golf course in the county.
And why do you wanna make it conditional?
Policy. If Chris Heine was here, um, there are a number of regulations, but, but even with those regulations. I don't wanna speak for him, but he felt strongly that that's a use that you don't wanna see on conservation land.
And kind of in, in that vein too, Jeff, one of the things that we were looking at when it came to conservation and the use table in particular was. Why uses seemed very permissive for conservation land. If the intent is for conservation moving forward to be our more restrictive. Um, environmentally sensitive zoning district, then looking at uses that aren't necessarily compatible with that was one of the premises of this. And we didn't wanna outright prohibit golf courses, but felt that making it conditional was that compromise. Since we only have the one, and that was kind of the premise behind a lot of why you'll see more restrictions in conservation. Versus agriculture. So even though there's a lower density threshold, looking at from the conservation standpoint, that these are more sensitive lands in the county. What really makes sense to be on them?
Yeah, and I might, I might have misunderstood. I was thinking that it had been permitted in ag and had gone to conservation, but that's not the case.
So is it? A unpermitted use or a conditional use in golf course too? That's what. This looks like. It would, it, in conservation, it was permitted by right and we're proposing it be a conditional use. It has always been conditional in ag and would remain.
Okay, I had that backwards too. Okay, thank you.
I might have said it backwards, sorry.
No, I'm sure you didn't. Okay, thank you.
Um, the other change was commercial stables were actually not permitted in the conservation specifically. So, and part of the problem with these two not being consistent is the two zoning districts were written at different times. So different uses were called different things. So sometimes there wasn't, the fact that they, they were different wasn't conscious. They weren't evaluated at the same time. But I think we, we agreed that commercial stables would be appropriate to be permitted in both districts. Okay, under residential, um, most residential dwelling types of principal uses, again, later on we'll get to accessory dwellings. But for principal uses, uh, multi-family, retirement homes, retirement, which is multi-family. Retirement villages and townhouses are all prohibited and they would remain prohibited. Single family dwellings are permitted and two family dwellings are currently permitted in the ag, but prohibited in the conservation. And we made no changes to that. Um, regarding group living, for assisted living, less than eight is permitted. Um, and Jay can explain it in detail, but that's more of a state law thing. For assisted living with more than eight residents, it's a conditional use and nursing home as well. And as Linda said previously. That's one of those uses that. The applicant would come to you for the density, basically, before they went to the BZI for the conditional use. And that is not a change. There are no changes to that. Um, there's a few changes under institutional daycare center. Private school and religious are all currently permitted. And again, this, if, if you did wanna talk about the remainders issue, the remaining portion issue. This may be the time. Um, and in the conservation, daycare centers, schools and private and nursery schools were permitted. Um, we're proposing that they be conditional in the conservation, kind of going back to what Linda explained about the golf course, looking at the purpose of the conservation district. And religious establishment was always conditional. So it's making those more consistent and that was part of it is looking at those as similar uses. And that would need the extra scrutiny in the, um, conservation district.
You, Mary, and, and I'm, I'm gonna go back to, you know, just asking, you know, i- in terms of. Making this more predictable and us not coming across as being, or even putting the BZI in, in a situation where. They're coming across as being arbitrary. I, I'm kinda, when I looked at this, there, there was a stretch here from assisted living facility down to religious establishment. And I'm all for freedom of religion, but I, I'm wondering why we're allowing. You know, a private school or religious establishment in a conservation area, when those uses and the amount of. The, the, the septic field might be extremely large. I can't, you know, depending on the size of the facility. Why would we allow that in a conservation area when we're trying to? You know, consider feasible and desirable to conserve open spaces, water supply sources, woodland areas, wildlife and other natural resources. I mean. You know, when you read that, I'm, I'm wondering why we're allowing that and why it's not just not allowed. In, 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 in this, through this section, there were like. There's six in a row there that I kinda put a question mark as to why we were doing this. And almost like, you know, why wouldn't we just let them go ahead and build a townhome?
So a couple of things with that, Pete, um, the assisted living less than eight. Cuz you're, you're going from, starting from those six, that's permitted. That is a state law that we're following for that. So that's why we kept that as permitted. And with, with the rest, especially going to the religious establishment, and this is something even for Jim to weigh in on. We would have to make all of those uses prohibited, essentially, especially the more institutional uses prohibited. If we're going to prohibit a church, because you can't treat churches any differently. Than other similar uses. That's, that's Supreme Court tested, federal, federal laws, so to speak.
Ralupa is the, the religious institutions and. Something Act. But, um, yes, it's, you just, you can't discriminate against religion and the Supreme Court has weighed in on it. And, um, I can get the board members, there's a similar case in, um, that came out of Baltimore County. About Baltimore County added, um, sort of restrictions for a religious establishment in the conservation district. And the court struck down those regulations under the federal Ralupa statute.
Okay.
I just don't have that case off the top of my head.
No, you mean, and, and Jim, I, I don't think that, that this isn't the quiz. I mean, don't rely, everything's fine, relax. I, I, I'm just, again, I'm worrying or wondering about densities and, you know, conservations. You know, if we're serious about agriculture, we're serious preservation and we're serious about. Conservation, which I think we are in some instances, you know, why would we allow, you know, these intensive uses? Um, and again, I don't wanna be discriminatory. I, I, you know, I, I, you know, I, I, I bring up things. All the time that seem to be, to put me in that camp and I'll just apologize. I mean, again. You know, when, when I was five years old, some folks burned a cross in my front yard. So I, 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 I have no patience with that kind of stuff. I really don't. Um, now I was only five, it wasn't anything I was doing, but my mom and dad were doing it. So please, please no, I'm, I'm not trying to be discriminatory here. I'm trying to, you know, be true to what we're saying here in terms of what we're doing in, in, and even having a conservation district.
Well, I think one of the things you have to look at too in considering this, a few things. You have to look at the map of Carroll County and how much of it is ag and conservation. And if you aren't going to allow the uses, the schools, the religious establishments, the nursing homes. It's just a huge part of the county that isn't going to be served as being able to have those. I mean. The towns can only handle so much and. I mean, the towns can only handle so much and I I wish I had the map here to pull up because I I think that that makes somewhat of the case. The other thing about those uses is there are already a number of them. So you would be creating a pretty big number of, I can get that number for you too. Nonconforming uses because we have always allowed it. So there are a lot. And like for religious establishments, if you're in the northern part of the county, that's where your religious establishment would be. So you wouldn't have any other land to put it on.
Yeah, again, I'm not talking about not allowing it on ag. I'm talking about conservation.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about both together.
No, I'm 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 fine leaving it exactly how you as you have it on ag. I'm I'm talking about conservation and and how many of these can we take some ambiguity away by taking away conditional uses? By not permitting it at all, by just having an X in that column under conservation. We have six there in a row that I just kind of put a question mark next to because from the intensity standpoint. And the amount of runoff and those kinds of things that are going to be happening, maybe impacting water and everything else that we're trying to conserve. You would we not prefer to have an X in that column in in four out of the six, five out of the six? That's what I was asking.
If we just Mary, if we just looked at to Pete's point, if we just looked at conservation. The issue that you had raised about serving the community and not having places for assisted living in churches and schools. Is that less of an issue when we're if we were just looking at conservation?
It would certainly be less of an issue because there's not nearly as much conservation. I'm looking at over my desk at the map right now. It would it would be much less of an issue. I don't know who it would impact. Off the top of my head, like who's already got one that would become nonconforming, which we've talked about the difficulty in being a nonconforming use. But yes, it would be much less impact than the ag, that's for sure.
Well, I wonder if, again, we can pull these categories out. It looks like the ones that he's talking about, Pete, correct me if I'm wrong, under group living, I think we got the answer on the assisted living less than eight. That one is state law and has to be the way it is. But the next five after that, if we were to put an X in the conservation column. Which I think is what you're talking about, right Pete?
Actually, yeah, I mean, and and having heard what everything's saying, I'm thinking assisted living facility greater than eight, nursing home, daycare center and private school. And maybe I I I you you can talk me into leaving any of these in here, guys. I mean, I I'm just, I I'm just when I was looking through the list, this I just kind of, you know, thought huh, you know, we 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 don't have a retirement home, we don't have retirement village, but we're allowing a nursing home. You know, how arbitrary is that on us? And so that that's just why I'm asking the question. That's all. And I don't mean taking the money. Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, sure. No, and so taking your point, you know, if we're going to be sort of true to the the idea behind conservation, which is to conserve it and for what Linda was saying, you know, have a have a bit of a higher standard for uses in the conservation zone. Maybe Mary, we could have you take a look to see how many nonconforming uses would would we create if those five those five categories had an X in them in the conservation zone. And also to to your point earlier. To your point earlier about would we be creating a hardship or an inconvenience for our community if some of these areas, you know, don't have churches nearby or or, you know, those sorts of things. I mean, obviously, we want to look at the whole picture. I I think we'd be interested in sort of taking a broad look at it. If we were to put the X there. From both of those, creating nonconforming uses and are we creating a hardship or an inconvenience that we don't intend certainly by taking that approach. That would be my way of kind of taking a maybe a deeper dive on this particular set of categories. Pete, is that line up with your thinking?
Absolutely. And I appreciate I appreciate just slowing down to take a look at it. Yeah, thank you.
Anybody on the commission opposed to that?
No, I think it's definitely, I don't want to just say you can't do it. We need to look a little bit closer at it and assisted livings. You know, there are limits, even in agricultural, how big you can go with building. Not like you can build what is being built up at the hospital. It's definitely smaller. So I think and and daycares too. So I think it's worth investigating further.
Excellent. All right. Good. Thank you. Thanks for raising that Pete. All right, Mary, I think we can move on.
Mary, it's seven ten. Do we want to stop here for this section to give development review their opportunity?
Yeah, Mary, Linda, thank you. I think that makes sense. I mean, I we don't want to rush anybody and we want to make sure we're being thoughtful about all of this. So unless there's some objection, I think. We'll hit the pause button on this and and then move on to item eight of our agenda. Any objection to that from any members of the commission? All right, good. Mary, thank you. Linda, thank you.
Sure. So before Mary goes really quickly, Mary, if you wouldn't pop back on for a second. So in order to finish up, then we have we'll pick up with these, starting with group living in the conservation and then we have to move through that all the way through page twenty nine for the use table. We have about what, like seven or eight more pages left to get through of the actual text, Mary?
More than pages, let me just say, we have to get through the rest of the use table. Then we have to get through all the accessory uses, which are on page thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two and thirty-three. Bulk requirements and then the last five or six pages. No, more than that are the specific use requirements. So we still do have quite a bit to get through, but I will say this is the kind of conversation we wanted to have. Certainly to get.
Absolutely. So just so you all know, we have our first meeting scheduled with the commissioners for a work session on August fourth. I don't believe we're going to get through everything on the twenty first of July. To move this forward. So but anyway, I just wanted to kind of give you all the lay of the land moving forward. So we'll be programming a lot of time at our next meeting to hopefully get through most of this and try to wrap it as best we can. With this information. So I just wanted to kind of go over that really quickly with you all. So that's all I had. Thank you.
And our next meeting is July nineteenth.
Yes, correct the nineteen, I apologize. Yep.
No, that sounds good. Thank you. So we'll go on to item eight. Which is chapter one fifty-five, proposed amendments, a discussion.
Thank you. Good evening. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes, yes, Laura, we can hear you.
Excellent. I had some some issues at the beginning with connectivity, but I think I'm good now. So it actually does say that chapter one fifty-five proposed amendments discussion. I like that. I was going to say I like that a lot, Jeff. Thanks. All right, so I am going to do a screen share here. And go straight to perfect. All right, so while I was away on vacation for last meeting, my wonderful staff stepped in. It's my understanding that Chris Heine did a nice introduction for you all about the text proposed amendments to chapter one fifty-five and then David B. Craft and Kirsten gave you an overview, a PowerPoint presentation on what we are doing, the the objectives, right? What we're doing and why we're doing, right? So you've had that hopefully at this point in time. It's also my understanding that you received a link to our website, which has all of these wonderful. They've done a great job. So if you go to land and resource management, you'll see these links for the environmental code changes and then the one fifty-five changes. If you click on chapter one fifty-five, it then has I gotta move my screen. There we go. It then it has an update summary, which is was is very nicely compiled. And then a clean version of our text and then a track changes version of our text. So and the process so far. So we also have links here to we have the Board of County Commissioners, a link to that. So you can hear the discussion. Well, there really wasn't too much discussion. It was just an overview to be presenting them exactly the same PowerPoint that you saw and saying, we need to go talk to the planning commission. Okay? And they said, of course, okay. So but the code required us to do that. And then we have the June twenty-first, that'll be a live link. So everybody can view that meeting and then today's meeting will be added with a live link to that. So people have those discussion items. All right, so let me see. Perfect. Okay, so what I want to do, I'm going to actually use that first document, the update summary and go through big picture. So we did the overall presentation with the objectives and I'm just going to keep like getting a little bit like I'm going to do the next like level of that picture. And then whenever you feel a need to really dig into certain text, if you do at all, we can go into that and have those discussions. That's exactly what this is for. We also have time scheduled with you next month on the nineteenth, if we need to come back and have further discussion. And then, of course, the process, this will go eventually before back before the Board of Commissioners for their adoption. I think that the most important things to note are, of course, as I said, Kirsten went through the objectives. We want to take a look at and retire our development review manual. Created in two thousand and four and actually integrated into the code. There is very little of this. I think she said this last time about six pages, give or take, that are actually not available on the website anywhere else, can't be found. So we are going to retire that manual, absorb things into chapter one fifty-five. We also want to reconfigure one fifty-five to streamline the layout. When we started to look at it, a lot of it, if you were unfamiliar with our code, coming to it for the very first time. It was not very just well laid out in terms of, okay, I want to do a subdivision. What can I do? How do I do it? So we really looked at making that table of contents very clear. You go there, you know exactly what you want to do. You go to that section of the code. And then just revising for clarity and predictability. So cross like any cross references from the zoning code, et cetera. Everything was same, matchy-matchy. So but I think what's most important is we are not changing the processes, right? There is nothing in here that changes how we operate. And there is nothing that changes the planning and zoning commission's authorities. Okay, so I think that's key. While we did move things around, we did a shuffle, if you will. There is nothing that changes the process that we already have in place and there's nothing that changes the authorities that you already have. So for instance, minor subdivisions, those, the chair of the planning and zoning commission has the authority to approve those. And that will still be happening. That's just an example. Okay? All right. So with that, I'll just kind of dive in. The key items that were added to one fifty-five, hold on one second, I'm gonna keep trying to move my little boxes around the screen. So you all are not covering my text. Okay, there we go. So the key items that were added. We added definitions from that manual that I just said we're retiring. There were definitions in there that were not in our code. For and and there are also, there were definitions in the for example, development. We did not have a definition for development, yet the chapter title for chapter one fifty-five is development and subdivision of land. Well, obviously, development should be one of the definitions. So we added definitions. Now, we did take like resource management codes had definitions of development. So we looked at that and we said, is that that's applicable across the board? So we pulled that over, included it in our code. You spoke about, you were talking a lot about remaining portions earlier. So remaining portions is integral to our code as to subdivision and agricultural zoning district. We did not have a definition for remaining portion. It was in the zoning code, which made no sense to us. So we pulled in remaining portion from the zoning code and it's in our code. It still appears in the zoning code, but it's in our code as well. So any language that it was being used in chapter one fifty-five, we made sure that there was a definition in there. And definitions that appeared previously that didn't appear at all in chapter one fifty-five. We're like, there's no reason for that. So very simple on definitions. We brought in what's used in that chapter. We took out what wasn't. All right, so I'm going to go through and highlight what was added, what was removed. And then I want to show you how that looks in terms of the layout of the chapter, which I think is key here. So I am going to jump to a couple of things that we added. So on use in common driveways, which is part of our code, we have and have always had a maximum number of users. And you can relate this to if they, if someone wants to do more users than what is permitted in the code, they'll come before you and request that modification. So maximum number has always been there. We, in conversation with fire and emergency services, we did add in a house number requirement. So here, this is D. House number signage may be required along the UIC driveway as directed by the Department of Public Safety. This was simply there. There are situations in the counties, you can imagine where a use in common, all of a sudden, like it'll go this way, it'll go this way. And and emergency services is not quite sure where they're heading. So they said, let's add this in if we can and leave it up to their discretion. If there's a branch or, you know, if it's unclear, let's put a requirement to add house number signage. And that again, that will fall under their review, the part of the review process. So that's a new addition in our code that was not there before. Access easements on use in common driveways. Again, this was here. So it's H access easements. So this has always been something that has been done. This is where you have multiple infee strips. You have a use in common driveway. And then there's always been provided via the plot, they're showing an access easement, but it was never actually written into the code that you should provide that. Well, in order for those property owners to actually legally utilize that use in common driveway, you do need that access easement. So we just included that now in the code again. So access easement shall be provided for all lots using the driveway. The easements are be to be depicted on the plot and recorded by date. Again, it was already happening, but it wasn't in the code. So that again was conversation with that was us and in conversation with fire and emergency services. Maximum length, this came from the manual, the maximum length for use in common driveways. Again, it was already, it was in the manual. We were including it in our reviews, but it wasn't codified. So we're pulling it over because we're retiring the manual. So let me jump to page thirty-eight. So page thirty-eight talks about simplified site plans. This, the only place the simplified site plans were outlined was in the manual. So we did pull this over into the code. And there's nothing different here in terms of what the manual is saying and how we review those and what the criteria are to run a simplified site plan. It just is being brought over into the code. Okay, you won't see the simplified site plans. They are strictly similar to off conveyances. They don't come before the planning commission. So nothing changes on your end. Nothing changes on our end. It's just that it's here included in the text. Page thirty-seven. I'm trying to scroll slowly so no one gets dizzy. So we did number four here. This is a proposed addition to the code that was not happening before. So in our subdivision plans, you will be familiar with this from a subdivision aspect, because this is written in the code for subdivisions, that your frontage, your road frontage, there is a dedication required. So I'm trying to think of an example, but you'll see written into the conditions parcel A will be of So I'm trying to think of an example, but you'll see written into the conditions parcel A will be of X acres, will be dedicated to Carroll County, and that happens routinely with subdivisions. Okay. The exclusion to that is the, in Ag, the remaining portions, they're not dedicating all of that frontage at the remaining portion. It's just the lots. Okay. So what we did was we translated this to site plans. It is not currently a requirement with a site plan to dedicate road frontage. And a site plan may or may not actually even have road frontage. You may have a lot that has access over an existing shared driveway, et cetera, that you're putting a mobile tower back there or a, a use in common driveway scenario. I could think of a few. So site plan right now, as I said, it doesn't have this requirement. It may or may not have actual frontage onto a publicly maintained road, but we are looking for here. If you do, let's go ahead and do that dedication as well. And that dedication comes to Carroll County Commissioners, and it's used for any potential road widening, et cetera. We excluded, just like remaining portions are excluded, this shall not apply within the agricultural zoning district. So we're not looking at that frontage in agricultural zoning. Okay. It's just anywhere else where you're doing a site development and you have that road frontage, we're looking for that dedication. All right. Any questions on that before I move to what we have removed? Okay. So those are the key additions. The things that were removed from the code. Maybe y'all find this interesting. So at some point in time, I really, I'm not sure when this was, okay, it's 2019. So at some point in time, prior to my being with the county, we had a pre-application review of ESD, Environmental Site Delightation. So before you even submitted a plan, you had to submit a plan which showed all the environmental features on the property. That is not something that is actually integral. It's, it's not. It's integral to the process right now. It doesn't free, it doesn't come before the process. But anything that's required by all of our environmental codes, it's integrated into the plan set. So we don't do this pre-review, pre-application at this point in time, because all of that information is being included in the site development plan, in the subdivision plan that is presented to us for distribution to those 24 plus or minus agencies for review. So anything that we were getting with ESD is now, it's already included in the plan process. So as that's not being utilized anymore, we struck that entire section. Again, it's, it's already included. And then the last, oh, I don't have the page on it. I'm sorry. The last thing we did was we looked at the, the parking space requirements. So prior to our, our current code has parking space requirements in chapter 155. And I'm going to scroll all the way back up to the table of contents, so that's the best place to look at this. Or not. Probably not. Okay, hold on. Let me see if I can, how do I switch my screen sharing? Okay. Anyways, I'll talk you through it and then I'll do my other screen share. I'm not very good at switching screen shares. Sorry. So parking space requirements are in 155. The minimum number of spaces that's required directly relates to the use. So there's an entire table in our code. I didn't do that. It stopped screen sharing, but I did not do that. All right. Someone is just saying, Laura, just switch it up right now. Okay, I'm doing it. Okay. Okay. So everybody can see this, I hope. So the current code is on the left and the table contents for both, and then the proposed is on the right. So we had the sections of the code related to parking space requirements. As I was saying, there was a table for uses and the minimum number of spaces per that use was outlined in chapter 155. After discussion with Jay Voight, Linda, Mary, Chris Heine, I think that's all the people that were in on that conversation. We talked about that and we said that there are most, most other codes outside of Carroll County are, are placing this in the zoning code, because there is that direct relation to use. So as you can imagine, we get a plan in, if it's a little unclear as to what the use is, zoning is the office that is saying, that is having that conversation that is determining the use. Okay. So as the parking space requirements directly relate to use, it made sense to all of us to shift that over to the zoning code. Now, the parking design standards, what you're putting on the plan and the fact that you, you know, what the dimensions are for your aisle, your drive aisles and your parking stalls, that remains within chapter 155, because that is how you're going to go about. You have your site plan requirements. Here's how you're going to go about your parking design standards. And here's your process for getting your site plan approved. So we did keep the design standards in chapter 155. Okay.
Laura, quick question.
Yeah.
If somebody's looking at this code, 155, and they're hoping to find the minimum number of spaces, is there something that's going to direct them to the zoning code so that they can find their way over there?
That's a really great question. We don't have anything written in right now that directs one there.
Well, maybe just, we don't have to deal with it tonight, but just some thought, because I'm trying to make this as user friendly to the public as possible. And so it just seems to me, if we've moved that somewhere else, if there's some way we can, you know, put a section in, you know, a lot of times when statutes or other codes are updated, there'll be something that says, you know, moved to, and then send the reader on to that section or that code.
I'm taking note of that. Yes. No, that is a good idea. And maybe I, we can all work together and work with Mary, who's looked at other codes to see if there's a good way to do that. I'm guessing she has some great ideas. So thank you. That is a good thought. I like it.
Yeah, let us know what you think about it. How to do it. Thanks.
Awesome. Okay. So, so this is the last thing I wanted to show you was our table of contents and how we've really gone about doing that, that shuffle, if you will, to make everything very clear in terms of what you can do and how you do it in terms of development and subdivision of land, right? So the first section you can see stays the same. And then we've added in a development of land section, which covers anything that is relates to either subdivision or site plan, right? It relates to both. So your general requirements, legal requirements, if you have off-site easements that are necessitated, that, that you have to, that's a full blanket subdivision site plan. It doesn't matter what your process is. You need to put that in place. If you have a public works agreement, that's required, right? It's going to, to, doesn't matter if you're subdivision or site plan. So these are general requirements that go along with the development of land in Carroll County. Additionally, fees, supply and review fees, that is relative to both subdivision and site plan, either or. So that's in the development of land, it's a new section that was added. Okay. And then we've taken and divided up into subdivision and site plan. Previously, we did not have that. We had a concept plan section and concept plan related to both subdivision and site plan. Well, we've taken those that, everything in that concept plan and anything that was pertinent to subdivision, we put it into subdivision. And then anything that was pertinent to site plan, we put it into site plan. So there may be some redundancies. If you're reading subdivision and you turn around and read site plan, you might see it twice. But it's absolutely relevant to the person who is looking to do a subdivision or another person who is then going in and looking to do a site plan. So we really clearly wanted to say, okay, subdivision, here is what you can do. Here is how you do it. This includes, of course, a special, you know, subdivision in the Ag District is unique. It has its own section. It was in the previous code, it's over here. And before, it was in particular areas. Well, it's subdivision. So we put it in subdivision. So we just move things to the logical place. Okay. We still have our cluster subdivisions, rural design standards, off conveyances. And use in common driveway standards falls in here as well. It goes along with subdivision. Then we have this new section, site plan. So it just talks about if you're developing an existing property. So site plan requirements, again, those parking design standards, and then the process. How do you go through processing a plan if it's a site plan? And then at the bottom, we had, it used to be called particular areas. We thought that was not only hard to say, but it was particular. So we looked at other code sections and found that zoning uses the language specific areas. So we mimicked, we utilized that same language in the zoning code and changed the name to specific areas, which these are, which you, we see every now and then, but not as frequently. Mineral resource recovery area, planned unit developments, planned commercial centers are there. And lots that have, that are in Ag preservation and mobile home parks are all in there. So that's how we tried to achieve all of our objectives, which in addition, I think that Kirsten talked about, I'm going to stop, share, stop sharing. Kirsten also talked about the technical memorandum, which will go onto our website. So these are, in our manual, we have what are called plates. I would call them like design stacks where it shows a drawing and it calls out exactly the details of like a, a use in common driveway section or apron section, right? So there, as they relate to use in common driveways, those are in the manual. So we're pulling them and putting them online onto the website, which will make them highly accessible. It's a place where engineers can go and actually pull that off of there and put them, plonk them right into their drawings, if you will, right? So that also allows for the flexibility. If those need to be updated, just like a form or a checklist, it's on the website. We just update it without having to go through the whole code to get to the manual to get it modified. And then other than that, everything else in the manual actually already appears on websites. There's, there's actually sections of the code which have the wrong, you know, chapter reference at this point in time, because the manual's from 2004. There's checklist, there's forms, they're all included in the manual as well. But it's all information that you can already find on the web. And today's day and age, the more stuff that we can have accessible to people on the website, the better off everybody is for easy access to that information. So. So that's, again, I am taking this from big picture down to like medium picture. And if you want to go into the nitty gritties of this, I am happy to go through like section by section, you know, definition by definition. Again, hopefully you've had a chance to look at it at this point in time. And if you have any questions you're asking me, I just realized I'm back on camera and I'm using my hands a whole lot. They're like, sorry.
So Laura, so number one, thank you for this. The, the presentation last time as an introduction gave us sort of a framework. And then your presentation tonight, I think is really good. I would be surprised if any member of the commission wants you to go into detail of each of the sections. I see some vehement shaking of heads. Anybody who says yes is going to put on, be put on a special probation. No, I'm kidding. But the, I don't think that's really the issue. I mean, here, we're talking about, we're not talking about changing anything. The substance of the process and our authority, as you said earlier, is all staying the same. We're just trying to make it clearer for people that are trying to navigate their way through our resources and the fact that it was in an outdated manual, part of it's on the website, but it's not accurate. Some of it's in the code, but nowhere is it all. And nowhere is it accurate is a problem that you're trying to fix, is my understanding of, of all of this. So I, I'm very satisfied with all this. I think the one question I have is really just a very practical question, which is for folks that deal with this and navigate through this information, we're not those people. We're on the backend, you know, we get stuff presented to us, but we didn't navigate through to try to put stuff together. But the engineers and the lawyers and others that you see day in and day out, I don't mean any sort of formal process, but is, would it be useful to get, you know, some of their input to say, look, here's the changes that we're talking about? Because they may have a, a comment that says, you know, there's some practical reason why this ought to be over here instead of there or something. I would just guess if there's an opportunity to do that, again, not some big notice for period or anything else, but just practically speaking, you know, Clark Schaefer's in the office and you say, here's what we're looking at, or Marty Hackett is in the office, not to pick on them, but there are many others. But just to, just to say, what do you think about this? Does this work?
Absolutely. So what we did and will be added to the, you know, the, the website, we did as a bullet point in May, we presented at our surveyors meeting. So we have a quarterly meeting with all of those people that you just mentioned. Engineers, there are representatives from the municipalities that come, there are attorneys that come. Everybody's invited. The, the attendance fluctuates based on who's available, but they, we have that quarterly. So we presented that in May to them. And then following our meeting with you in, just the other week in June, we sent out an email to everybody on that distribution list and there's there's at least 60 people. I think there's more like 80. It, it's a lot. It's a huge list. So we distributed an email that said that this is the link to the website. Here's an email address. Here's a phone number. If you have comments, suggestions, et cetera, we would appreciate that. So we, we are looking for that feedback and we're trying to get the word out as much as possible. Here it is on the website. Please give us your feedback. I think that perhaps the hardest part, I thought this is where you're going with us, but the hardest part, just like when you change the like chat, we used to be chapter 71, right? So you change not only the title of chapter, but because we're moving things around, it's going to take, my learning curve is going to be like four to six months to figure out, like, where did that go?
Right, right. No, that's true anytime. But I think it's worth the effort, certainly. It's more intuitive now.
It is. We'll just have to have that cheat sheet before and after.
Yeah. No, I think that's great. So anyway, those are my comments. Does anybody else on the commission have any, any thoughts or comments around this?
I had, I had one more thing, just worth noting. It was in my notes, but I skipped over it because it actually might be of interest to you all personally. So you, on occasion, there is a section of the code that allows for a modification to like a use in common driveway. So we've seen some plans come in where they say, well, it's supposed to be 12 feet wide. I have an existing driveway, it's 10 feet wide, and they give you all the reasons, you know, to request that that stay at 10 feet, right? So we've actually adjusted the percentages that were in the code that were called out for that. So that very common aspect of going from 10 to 12 that you see so often, that can fall within an administrative modification. So you won't have you won't have to see those anymore that, unless the director determines they need to see it. Absolutely. I'm not going to prove it, but it will fall within the discretion of an administrative modification. So.
Is it set up in such a way that if you all administratively reject their request, they have a right to bring it to us to make their case?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
Good. All right. Anything else, Laura?
No, sorry. That was my.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Mathias tonight? Very good. Well, we applaud the work. Really, really good, really important. And I think it makes it better for our community, certainly, to find their way through this stuff, which can be very technical and very confusing. So it should be less, less confusing now. It's just as technical, but a little less confusing. So thank you.
So, so from what I'm hearing, well, we're going to leave this open on the website for that comment period. But I'm But I'm hearing that you don't need to come back before us and go through this line by line. Once you have that like public comment period, then you can go back to the board. Is that what I'm claiming?
In other words, it'll get through a public comment, you'll come back to us and say, we haven't received any additional comments or we have, we've made changes or we haven't. We can button it up then and then we can make a recommendation to send it off to the board of county commissioners with our recommendation.
So, right. So it would be like a five minute agenda item versus another.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's fine. Does anybody object to that? Okay, no, I think, I think that's exactly right, Laura. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great evening. We'll move on to item nine, which is general public comment. Do we have anybody signed up to give us any general public comments this evening?
No, there are no members of the public with us this evening.
All right, thank you. Then we'll move on to item 10, which is adjournment. Do you have to entertain a motion that we adjourn?
I make the motion that we adjourn.
I hear a motion. I see a second by Mr. Lester. All right, thank you. Then all in favor?
All right.
All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you. Thanks to everybody tonight. Good meeting. Really appreciate it.